All right, I'd like to call to order the October 30th Andover City Council meeting. We'll start off with a roll call to my left.
Brian Schwan, Councilmember.
Caroline Hale, Councilmember.
Troy Taber, Councilmember.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Greg Schneider, Councilmember.
Mike Warrington, Councilmember.
Matt, I'm sorry. Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chet Russell, Fire Chief.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director of Public Works.
Mark Datter, City Administrator.
And our city clerk is here?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on with item number three, which is the invocation. I see Pastor Jerry Smith with Faith Baptist. Thanks for joining us this evening.
That's great. Lordly, thank you for the beautiful fall colors as we work and live and travel around our city. We thank you for just the community in which we live and work and serve. We pray for those first responders. We pray for those who teach, those who serve, those who live in this neighborhood. And, Lord, just help us to be good neighbors to one another. Help us to serve with gladness and help us to just love as you've loved us. We thank you for privileges to get together and carry on business as well as just meet one another in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Would you stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? You can, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Brett White, Superintendent of the Andover School District, so a pleasure to be back with you again this meeting. As I mentioned at the last previous City Council meeting, the district really values our relationships with both the city and BCC. We view our partnerships with the city and BCC as vital to the success of our school district and our community. So again, thank you for giving me just a couple minutes to speak this evening. Let's say on a personal note, through the bond projects, I've actually attended more city meetings here in the last few months than ever in the last 17 years, so I've enjoyed that and really enjoyed working with the Butler folks as well as the city and developed some great friendships there. This evening, I just want to share some information in regards to a question that's come up to myself and several from the district about the impact on the district if BCC would remain beyond the time with their planning to relocate their facilities to the 13th Street campus. So gathered a little bit of data with our bond partners and just want to share that with the council and Mayor this evening. Again, kind of as a review, per the terms of the lease between BCC and the district, four years is required to give notice to the other party of the desire to end the lease. So following our bond issue in May of 2017, that summer, the district gave that four-year notice because obviously we'd have the new Andover High School. So really Butler would have until the summer of 2021 to depart the Andover High Campus. Dr. Kroll and the BCC team have worked very closely with us and developed a plan to relocate as soon as possible, really to be, their plan is to have that relocation completed by December of 2019. That's really ideal and important for us. We would, our plan is to demo the existing building, including the BCC wing, in the summer, you know, May, early June of 2020, then the new Andover High School would open in August of 2020. So if there would be any delays in the BCC relocation, here are some of the implications for the district. First, the parking issue, having to have the BCC wing remain would prevent us from building a majority of the new front parking lot. That'd be approximately 150 parking slots that would be impacted by that. Utilities, we'd have to bring in temporary electricity, water, and sewer. The gas service is already separate. Also, if the BCC portion would have to remain and we demoed the rest of the existing building, then we would need to reconstruct a semi-permanent exterior wall along the south side, it'd be approximately 200 feet by 16 feet high. So according to our team at Hutton, total cost, including the temporary utilities, the semi-permanent wall where the two buildings would be linked together, mechanical, electrical systems up and functioning would be between $300,000 and $400,000 would be that cost. Each month of the delay or the, each month of the project would continue would be about $30,000 in general conditions costs. So those costs add up as Hutton's time would continue beyond the projected end date. So if BCC would not be able to leave until required to do so, they say really in the $500,000-plus range would be the total cost potentially for our district. Our bond projects are all allocated to various projects, so really this would very likely become a general fund expense for the district. So again, just wanted to share that information in response to some questions and requests that we've had, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Lawrence, council members, and Andover City staff. Appreciate being able to visit with you. I'm Kim Kroll, the President of Butler Community College here this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of our board and appreciate, again, the longstanding partnership that we have with the city and with the school district in Andover. Butler has had a really longstanding partnership and strong partnership with the Andover School District. We've been on the north end of Andover High School since 1992, so 26 strong years of partnership at that location, and I think that that's really significant. Their formalized plans, as Brett indicated, for construction at Andover High School and for the Andover School District, we worked really closely to try and align our timeline with theirs because we knew that their project was going to move along faster than what our termination agreement with our lease indicated, that four-year timeframe. And so our agreement really in working with them was to try and vacate that space almost 18 months earlier than what the lease agreement would require us to do. And we did this to support the Andover School District, the Andover community who's passionate about educational opportunities for their children, all the students who attend the high school, and the families and the individuals who supported the school district's bond issue to do these projects. We want to be able to honor that commitment to them and to vacate early as a good partner and friend of the school district and to this community. Our 5,000-building has been a college classroom building in the location where it is now for over 15 years and with the approval of two prior special use permits in 2003 and in 2005. All of the conditions that were associated with the approval of the special use permit in 2005, we believe, have been met following the initial veto from the mayor at that point in time. The current special use permit was supported unanimously by both the Planning Commission and the City Council and then sent back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration and review again and has come back in front of you again tonight with some additional recommendations. We understand the recommended action that's noted in this board action item that's in front of you tonight that requires successful plating within one year and provisions made for public improvements that need to be agreed upon by both the City Council and the college. The trustees and the college are mindful and cautious of what will be fair and reasonable, but we really want to work together to seek resolution so that, again, we can move forward and meet the school district's timeline and help their project along as well. Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to speak? Being none, I will close the public forum and move on to the acceptance of the agenda. I don't see any additional agenda items here this evening, but I believe we had some last-minute insertions.
Of the temporary access license for Yorktown Road.
Those are now in the packet.
Yep, everybody should have those uploaded.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, we have the consent agenda, that's item 7.1 through 7.6. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, excuse me, item 7.1 through 7.6 that's presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Greg and a second by Mike to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, actually two portions of this on the aforementioned Yorktown project. You handling this?
The plat before you tonight is a little bit unusual in that it is a plat of roadway only. This road right-of-way is in order to accomplish the construction of Yorktown Road between Highway US 54 and Douglas Avenue. This plat's the result of over a year of efforts between the landowner and the city's engineering firm and the developer's engineering firm. And then there are two accompanying access documents that accompany the plat in order to allow some temporary relief from the access controls that are noted on the face of the plat from now until when the Highway 54 freeway and frontage roads are built.
Now, I know we had a meeting last week with a lot of members of the adjacent neighborhood and bicentennial showed up. I would like to suggest, which was suggested at that meeting by a lot of landowners, that we provide another temporary access on Paul Revere. It already is allowed a right-in and a right-out, but I would like to modify this plat to include a left-in. And again, only until such time that the Kellogg expansion comes through because there will be a baggage road that they will be able to exit their neighborhood and turn a left. I believe that's on Archer though, right?
Yes.
So I would like to add a left-in into this bicentennial neighborhood from Yorktown. Are you familiar with where I'm talking about? They expressed some legitimate concerns about access to the neighborhood.
I think we've got some drawings of this particular proposal. Got to flip through and find them here if we can.
This is the location of Paul Revere Street, and the concern was that with the, with the closing of Betsy Ross Street and the west, be the west end of the subdivision at Douglas Avenue, that a person would have to traverse around the subdivision to get on to Douglas Street or go down to Kellogg. So this, in lieu of what would have been a right-in only and a right-out only, the engineers have looked at the ability to add a left turn into the bicentennial subdivision only.
That is on Paul Revere.
On Paul Revere Street. We've had a little conversation about the plat itself, and we believe because the right-of-way dedicated by the plat connects to an existing public right-of-way, that really the condition to limit it to right-in, right-out is not, is not the platter's responsibility. They're both public streets, so the public has the right to use the street however they choose. And you being the stewards of the public rights of way could choose to do this left turn in a, in a temporary basis if you choose.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Correct.
Has this been covered with the owner-applicant to see if they are in agreement or opposed to this project?
I've discussed it briefly with them, and as long as this is temporary until the access road, the baggage road, whatever you want to call it, after the Kellogg expansion gets approved, I believe it'll be fine.
For clarification for the, oh, Mr. Mayor, for clarification, how long do we think that could even be real, in reality?
10 to 20 years, that's a pretty big range.
Yeah.
Probably somewhere around the 15-year mark.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I might want to get the owner on record to confirm your suggestion.
You're talking about the landowner to the west?
Yes, I think they're here this evening.
They are.
No, I was talking about the developer, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, since this is a, will be a public right-of-way.
It is.
It's basically, I mean, I don't know, I don't know why we just, just take off the, completely take off the one right-in and out and just make it a fully functional.
Okay, now that is a great idea, but that cannot be done. If you'll pull up your other map showing the vicinity of those right-in, right-out ingress and egresses, it's, there's just, they're too close to Paul Revere. That's why it was suggested to be a right-in and a right-out only anyway. What I'm suggesting is to just give them the left-in because that's basically all you're going to be able to do.
You're talking, you're talking about because it would almost become a suicide lane, basically.
Right, you'd end up with zero median.
Yeah.
To landscape and do, to do what we're talking about doing, debeautification, yeah, I mean, exactly. Otherwise, it would just be a five-lane road with no center median.
Sure, if you look at that drawing, you can see all of the left arrows. If you were just to duplicate that, that would, that would be what's required for full movement.
So what we're talking about is a glorified curb cut.
Right.
Not a left-hand turn lane with storage capacity like you see that's going west into the other property.
They could be there for 10, 15 years plus.
Yes, sir. Until they're able to access, to go left on Yorktown from the baggage road that gets created.
That baggage road is maybe 600 feet south of this location.
So they're talking about driving, if this access point gets closed when that baggage road gets, but you're talking about driving a very short, a city block to go out left on Yorktown, whereas they have no way to do that right now at all.
Right.
I'm just suggesting this as, well, I just think we need to do it. I think it's the right thing for the neighborhood, give them a little more access.
Mr. Mayor, I think what you've suggested is very fair and reasonable. I just want to make sure that the developer concurs with, with this slight change. Here your.
And I threw it on you this evening, I know. You've had five minutes to consider it.
My name's Jerry Jones, and I'm representing the development team, the property owner, Mike Leese and his family. And we did just learn about this tonight. We've been working on this design and this project, as was mentioned in the introduction, for over a year and with a lot of negotiation over these access points. So it's, it's been made very clear to us over the years, over the course of this past year, the importance of these turning access points and the restrictions, and it's something that we've come to take very seriously. Really, on the other hand, we want to see this project move forward. It's a very important project, we feel, for the city of Andover. It's going to provide a lot of, of access north and south for the citizens of Andover, and so we'd hate to see anything slow it down. And, and we're very pleased that we're here tonight to see this plat approved with Mr. Leese dedicating a significant amount of property to the city to be able to build this road. The one thing I want to clarify that, Mayor, that you brought up earlier, is that this would be temporary and that the need for it would go away with the baggage road.
That's correct.
The baggage road is not dependent on Kellogg US 54. In fact, we anticipate that that'll probably, the need for that will be probably far in advance of the freeway. So that's really what we'd like to clarify is that once the baggage road goes in from Yorktown to Archer, that at that point, that access point to Paul Revere could go away.
So the baggage road could precede the Kellogg expansion?
Yep.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, that, the baggage road, I was, we were trying to tie that into the baggage road creation anyway, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that, that they were two separate.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification for me, when we're talking about the median, so when this baggage road is open and we now say no more left and right turns, that it's only right-in, right-out, does, then the median can be completed and filled in and go back and make it a solid median parkway?
Absolutely.
And then the other thing we just wanted to clarify is that in no way would this restrict any of the access points that you're gonna, you are considering tonight in the plat that have been granted to the.
The plat is the plat with this one exception. Caroline, to answer your question, this is very similar to what we did on 21st Street in front of Quail Crossing. Now, that access point is still open because the development across the street hasn't occurred. So, you know, I don't know, we're guessing on when this baggage road is going to be created, just like we were guessing on when the parcel across the street of 21st Street was developed, so.
Well, and then the.
They're both tied to those type of provisions, so.
And that other issue, did we, I didn't think that we even said that it would close later, but maybe we did, I don't remember that. But as long as we're clarifying it now, that this will close and be filled, so that's good with me.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
So what I would recommend is that the council make a motion to accept the dedications on US 54400 and the Yorktown final plat, with the exception of adding a left-in only on to Paul Revere from Yorktown. You have a temporary engineering fix for it right now, so, but we'll, we just authorize staff to engineer it so it works.
I would, I would make such a motion, although I believe it, I assume it's subject to the creation of the baggage road as has just been suggested, and then that issue would go away.
Then the access would be restricted.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by CR, second by Troy, to accept the dedications on the US 54400 and Yorktown final plat, with the exception of allowing a left-in on to Paul Revere, whose access will be later restricted upon the creation of the baggage road. Is that clear enough? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number nine, which is Special Case SU 2018-02.
Mr. Mayor, I'm.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did miss 8.2.
Oh, okay.
The temporary licenses that were added to the packet. Now, these are also restrictions on the same road that are allowing for access, right?
Yes, if you could go back to the big plat drawing.
The final plat, is that what you want?
Yes. The plat, final plat, not the exhibits.
You need it towards.
The top drawing. You'll notice on this plat that there are some access points that are called out temporary. Here is a full access control and another full access control that in the interim until the freeway is built, the developer needs access closer to the highway. So the method here is to plat access control and then turn around and license back that access to the developer on a temporary basis, and that's what these two, two agreements are.
Unless you're in support of this.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the temporary access licenses for US 54/400 and Yorktown as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by CR, second by Brian, to approve the temporary access license as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, Special Case SU 2018-02. You know, this is a new ordinance, right? So I probably need to go through my checklist again? Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, before I proceed with this hearing, I'll ask if any of the council members intend disqualifying themselves or discussing this because they have a bias or conflict of interest? Have you all received the Planning Commission meeting minutes of October 16th?
Yes.
All right, has the protest, has the clerk received any protest petitions?
No, we have not.
Am I forgetting anything? Am I forgetting anything? J.D.? Okay, and I'll ask our zoning administrator to give us a brief background report and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
The last ordinance regarding this property was vetoed by the mayor, and eventually the governing body sent the case back to the Planning Commission for further consideration of the specific factors that were listed in the mayor's summary of his veto. The Planning Commission took the case up at their October 16th meeting and again returned with a motion to approve, only they've slightly changed the conditions to be a little bit more clear, clear about required public improvements.
What are the council's options this evening?
The council's options would be to, by simple majority vote, adopt the ordinance, or modify the Planning Commission's recommendations and modify the ordinance as was prepared.
So the way I see it, you actually have several options. The ordinance that I vetoed is still in play. You can simply vote on that ordinance to override my veto, which that is ordinance number, what was it? What was the ordinance I vetoed?
I believe it was 1679, we're checking that.
1679, so that's option number one. Option number two is to adopt a recommendation of the Planning Commission on ordinance, this would be. this would be, I believe, 1685, and approve it. Option number three would be to override the planning commission, add whatever other conditions you want to it, to 16, to ordinance 1685. Am I forgetting anything? But that would require a supermajority vote to override, five out of six? Simple majority, if you wanted to add any additional conditions to ordinance 1685. If you want to override 1679, that requires a supermajority, right?
And of course, the other option is to do nothing.
To do nothing. I think we've had enough of do-nothings in this city that got us in a lawsuit that lasted three years. So I implore you to do something, yes or no? I'll leave, I'll leave the discussion to the council. What are you thinking?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple comments here. Number one, I, I have a preference of attempting to pass a new ordinance somewhat similar to that which the planning commission has sent us back this evening, rather than attempting to override a veto. I think this proposal is better than where we were last time. I, I think we ought to talk about what those changes are and whether anybody has, including the mayor, has any comments or suggestions or complaints or issues that we could address this evening, and then we can ultimately vote that up or down, however we wish to do so.
Others?
Sounds good to me.
I, I agree with Clark.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so what you have before you is ordinance 1685, it's a brand-new ordinance from the planning commission, and it is based on their findings and factors, some of which have changed since the, from the previous ordinance. I still have a few issues that I think need to be addressed. Since you're, since you're wanting to discuss this ordinance, we can. I still don't believe it's a, it's a proper place for a school. Nonetheless, let's get into some specifics. I watched the planning commission meeting that night and I read the minutes. It was somewhat very confusing to me how they arrived at the same conclusion. They, on factor number six, they agreed with me. On factor number 12, they agreed with me. They determined number, factor number nine, number 11, number 13, and number 14 were no longer applicable. But yet they used those factors in approving the first ordinance. So I'm, I'm just wondering what changed there. As far as their motion, it was pretty hairy, but somehow we've muddled through and found an ordinance that has some provisions to it. The first one is it should be platted within 12 months. I still claim that needs to be platted first. We have, we have none of the dedications that are going to be required. But they address that in condition number two. The provisions made for public infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to Commerce Street, Yorktown, 13th Street, water and sewer improvement, and that those be agreed upon by both the city council and the college as owner of the present property. So my question to you is, if we pass a special use, what's going to happen when, if we can't agree on those improvements? What's going to happen if we get a cost, a cost estimate, an engineer's estimate on what it's going to take to make those improvements, the college says we can't afford that? What's going to happen? I mean, they're tied, these provisions are tied to this ordinance. So you're going to give them the special use permit, and then if we can't agree, you're going to take it away?
That was certainly my idea. If we couldn't get the proper infrastructure developed, that was the basis of my, my, I don't know about taking it away. I just don't think we would allow a CO or, or anything else. We would believe that, that we would move forward with improvements at the same time as they're moving forward with construction and try to keep those on a similar path.
If I were the college, I don't know that I would like this condition placed on this ordinance. I mean...
I'm sure they don't, but...
Yeah, you wouldn't know, well, what's it going to cost? That's been asked, Dr. Kroll asked that. We don't know.
Well, you know, we have an estimate, just like, just like...
Okay, let's say, uh, let's say we, this does pass and we want some improvements to Yorktown, the future Yorktown, right? How long is it going to take to build Yorktown? Would, are, we haven't even agreed we're building Yorktown from Central to 13th Street yet. There's no alignment, there's no engineering drawings, there's a proposed conceptual sketch. So let's say that gets pushed out to six, seven, eight, nine years. I mean, you're going to hold on to petitions for that long?
I can say this, if they come back and put in front of you, and this is, was the basis of my recommendation, and put in front of you a developer's agreement in a plat that you're not necessarily agreeing with, the financing mechanism, or they don't go forth, your ability to veto that is not...
I have no ability to veto that.
Right, right. This is the only way, if you're concerned about infrastructure, in my view, that you're going to be able to...
I am, I have repeatedly said that I am, and I have repeatedly said I would like to see a plat and a developer's agreement before we approve this special use.
That plating mechanism is, is the tool for all of those improvements.
Right.
I've, I've contended since the beginning that, that it's the plat that should be the mechanism, not the zoning ordinance.
So where's the plat?
Well, let me ask a question, Les. If we make this proposal subject to a plat, we don't lose that argument. That comes back here and we have the exact same argument at that time. It, the, the college could say, I'm not paying what I would consider to be their fair share of 13th Street, or we want future assurances on Yorktown. Whatever that plat says it ought to be, I think, doesn't that come back to us?
Yes.
Why can't we argue that at that time?
Absolutely, I, I agree.
What I'm telling you is, what if you can't reach an agreement? What's going to happen? You're going to yank their special use permit? Or not grant them a certificate of occupancy after they spent millions of dollars constructing it?
Well, I mean, they're going to have to get a developer's agreement as part of the process of go-forward and, and the plat is, would be, I mean, we always make people get the plat done before you give them a building permit, correct?
I might just inquire with the mayor, because I apologize, I don't understand this. If we pass a special use permit tonight, subject to the plating, can Butler College commence construction? Or don't they have to have the plat approved first?
That would depend on the words of that condition. Are the words "subject to plating" or "subject to plating within a term", one year or whatever that term might be? Subject, "subject to plating" would mean that the ordinance couldn't...
Do we have the authority to make the timing of the plating a shorter period of time than 12 months?
You can make that whatever term you see fit.
Is that a potential resolution to make that? I don't know what the status of the, I know you've hired engineers, I assume you have.
The plat's almost done. We haven't seen it. The petitions were what, insufficient? I heard there was an issue with the petitions already.
I think they're waiting to submit those after they see the decision tonight.
Well, I would think a plat would be able to be done pretty quickly.
What, what happens if we make that 30, 60 days?
The plat has already been approved by the planning commission.
So where is it?
And it's, and it's waiting on this decision and the appropriate sufficient petitions.
Can I interrupt a second? The plat that's been approved by planning does or does not answer the question of what their fair share is on these improvements.
It doesn't.
The plat, the lines on the drawing have been approved. The petitions for improvements and the guarantees, the developer's agreement, have not. That's why it's, it's incomplete, it's not ready to come to the governing body yet.
I, I think the mayor has a very valid point, and we ought to be able to arrive at that answer, whether it's tonight or in 30 days or whatever.
Not going to get it tonight.
Whatever that timing might be. But that, I, I'm not trying to take the thunder away from you.
I have no thunder here, I'm just saying, I want to see the plat with the guarantees. Do we know when this plat's going to be ready for us to look at it?
We don't. We've approved the lines on the paper, but we don't have sufficient petitions for the required improvements.
Are the dedications, are the dedications for Yorktown and Commerce made on that plat?
Yes.
What we're, what we're talking about is a share of the improvement's cost at this point.
And I guess, Mr. Mayor, I didn't think it was appropriate in the special use permit to make the, who's going to have what share of the cost?
For what?
Right, involved in this. I'm just trying to force, you know, as staff, we're recommending that infrastructure improvements, and the planning commission has recommended that infrastructure improvements go along with a special use permit, because we feel like that is going to assure us, it's going to be a mechanism to assure us it goes in. Yes, we have other steps we have to take to get there.
What I'm saying is, what if you can't agree?
I, I think we worry about that at that time. I, I think that might be the difference in our positions to, tonight, is you'd like to have that resolved before you agree with the special use permit. And we are, I'm inclined to support the special use permit and handle...
And worry about it later?
As time comes to our bench for that resolution.
You know, the vagueness of this ordinance, the subject property be satisfactory platted within one year. What does that even mean? It meets, meets our requirements?
Correct.
What are our requirements in this instance?
Those of yet to be agreed to.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You're giving them a special use permit and you know you're going to ask them for something, potentially millions of dollars, but you don't know exactly what yet.
I completely agree with your position that the, the colleges would really be leaving the door open
Wide open.
If they were to support an ordinance that gave one year to come to an agreement and they'd already begun construction. As, as stewards of my tax dollars, I wouldn't support that.
This much I will say. I did want to see the plat. I still want to see the plat before I approve a special use ordinance. If you were to approve this tonight, I can't tell you exactly what I'll do, but I think based on my comments, you know what I'm going to do. That's just one factor anyways of, of why I don't support this expansion, and it is an expansion. So I guess I'll leave it up to you all, what do you want to do?
I would like to carry on with what your objections are and see if we can assist in trying to get that resolved.
Okay, so the plat.
Go right ahead, I'm sorry.
The plat, number one, the vagueness of this ordinance.
So what if we were to suggest the plat to be approved within 60 days of, of approval of the special use permit?
I wanted to see the plat prior to the special use permit. You can make it 60 days, you can make it a year. I want to see the plat before the special, it's a chicken or the egg, man. I want to see the chicken.
I might inquire of staff, is that, would that be a proper condition that the plat precede the approval or disapproval of the special use permit?
Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
It has varied, is what I...
Okay.
Well, I mean, if that's a provision, then you need to defer this ordinance until we get a plat worked out.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? What, and, and maybe this is going to have to come from the college to answer that, but if we can get the plat worked out first, is there, is there something that does this special, if we approve a special use now, does, do they get to start doing something before we see the plat? Or doesn't the plat still have to be done before you can start doing something?
I think there may be some opportunities for demolition prior to...
They've already been issued a demolition permit.
How much does this slow them down if we get to see their plat first?
Okay, the plat is basically done. What we're talking about really is the petitions, okay? Let's, let's, I, I'm, I'm using the word plat, let's use the word petition. That'll, that'll clarify it here a little bit.
So how long does it take to do the petitions?
Again, petitions for...
It's a question for bond counsel.
Right, petition for streets, whatever it is.
Yes, the situation is that petitions are permissive requests of the city. You wouldn't be obligated to accept the petitions under any terms because it is effectively borrowing money using the city's borrowing capacity that will be paid back with special assessments. So I think the fundamental question is what, what division of costs will there be for this property? And to what extent property owners will participate? And I don't think the college knows the answers to those questions just yet, to be frank. So we, we did, our, our office did receive some draft petitions, they had some errors in them. We corrected them, but we haven't had petitions yet submitted with signatures on them, which will define whether or not they're adequate petitions. Does that answer your question? If not, ask it and I will try and answer it.
I, I wish at some point we quit beating around the bush and really just figure out what in the heck the deal is. We're concerned about the, the, the schools' obligation for certain improvements and what they're going to pay and what the city's going to pay, what other people might be paying for them. Is, is that our real question?
That's a very valid question.
I think that's a, I think that's a fundamental question on the improvements, yes.
The problem with that is, we haven't told them what we'd like them to pay, and we haven't told them what the potential cost of those improvements would be. So why would they agree on that? I mean, they, she referenced that in the, the planning commission meeting, somebody asked her. She couldn't answer that question because she's like, well, we never, we don't know the cost.
At the risk of trying to be helpful and putting a fine point on the problem, really, ignoring everything else that's been discussed tonight, I think in connection with the special use, what you should be looking at is the land use and whether or not this use is an appropriate use of that land use. That, that really should be the question in connection with any zoning request. What I am hearing in this case, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand the mayor has additional concerns, but I think the principal concern is that this land may not be appropriate for this use unless there are improvements to the transportation access, given the use that's being anticipated. And so we have a citizen planning commission that I think tried to address that and anticipated that, that, that's really a valid question, a valid concern. That, that, I think what they're saying in their recommendation is that this is a valid use of this land if we can get the roads improved. If we can get the roads improved and the, and the infrastructure it needs, then, then we're okay with it. If, I'm paraphrasing, but, but I have to because, to be honest with you, the, the, the motion is a little, uh, conrobulated as it relates to what they were trying to accomplish. So to put a fine point on it for council member Nelson, and you all can correct me, cause I don't have a vote. But I think what is being said here is that, yeah, this probably is okay for this special use. Uh, if in fact, we can get the infrastructure that supports that special use, uh, built. And the question of whether and how and not that gets built is typically a plating concern and, and, and we do many times allow people to plat after we've determined whether or not a special use is appropriate. Here, I believe that what some are saying is that it is critical to this special use, that this infrastructure be there. And I don't know for sure, but in staff meetings, I'm going to suggest to you that I don't know that there's even a consideration or a concern about the necessary improvements to Thirteenth Street. I think the concern is whether these improvements to Commerce and Yorktown are really necessary and who's going to pay for them. I, I'm reading between the lines that the staff really believes they're necessary, given the increase in the number of cars. Um, but I think it gets down to, uh, who, who's gonna pay for it. And I suppose one of the things we're trying to prevent, but which we haven't been able to do, based on the order of applications, is that you're being asked to use, to decide tonight whether or not this is appropriate for special use without knowing, um, what roads will be there, uh, to support it. But you have a right throughout plating to accept the necessary dedications. And if the dedications are not sufficient, uh, then, then you can just simply say that's not sufficient to support that building use. Again, I've tried to be helpful to put a point on it. If I haven't put a point on the problem, I apologize.
I have a question. In the last planning commission meeting, uh, when they were considering factor seventeen, they said that there would be a relative gain, uh, to public health and safety if the improvements were made. And then they cited number seventeen as a factor in why they would approve the special use permit. So they're, they've basically tied, we didn't do this, they, and, and with their, with their provisions here, their condition number two, they have tied the infrastructure to this special use permit. We didn't do that, right? They've tied it to it.
Can I, uh, are you waiting for an answer to that? I have a question. What, do we have, uh, I'm, I'm flipping it over just a second. Do we have an understanding of what the percentages ought to be on the sharing of the cost?
Oh, I wanted to see if this was our, by the planning commission, and I'll say on my recommendation, I wanted to see if they thought it was necessary for these improvements to occur, then I thought we'd work out what we needed to pay. Um, that, my understanding is the college is trying to work with the adjoining property owner. I don't know where those discussions are. I'm sure they're going to say, we wanna know exactly what we have to do and exactly what we're asking for here. Um, and that's what I think would be critical to a developer's agreement, a plat, uh, any guarantees, petitions, is you wanna know exactly what the council's going to require of them. And, you know.
You think I've been saying?
No, I know, but if we put it in the special use and you say the infrastructure improvements you need, then we have a point of negotiation we can go forward on, is my belief.
It says. It says those shall be agreed upon between the city and the college. What if they're not agreed upon? That's my, that's my problem.
I concur with what Mark just said. If we can get this in written form, I think that's something for us to proceed with. And I realize this is only one question that you have raised, but it's a important one, I think, for everybody. And something that we're all comfortable that we can arrive at some agreement as we progress down the road.
Logic, Mr. Mayor, I'll try, try to go with it one more time was if we could get the council to agree with the planning commission on the proper infrastructure improvements that needed to be made, then we could go back, obviously, to the, uh, planet, the college and see what the fair share of the split is. But I think the, the council needs some time to think about what that is. We haven't really had a discussion about that. And I think the first step is to be like, okay, do you think these infrastructure improvements are necessary? And then in the next couple of weeks or month, we have some time to think about what a fair, uh, allotment of those expenses are. If you think the city should take on any.
Are you suggesting that we defer this matter?
I really think you need, we need to give the col- the college some guidance to the special use permit. That's my opinion. You don't have to agree with it, but I think we could give them some guidance tonight to start negotiating, uh, the improvements they need to have done, the developers agreement, the petitions they need to submit, and then ultimately the plat that we need to approve.
I, I am very comfortable that we can sit down with the college and their representatives and hammer out an agreement. We're, we're all parties to what is in the best interest of the city.
I'm of the view that the college doesn't have to agree to pay for these tonight because we put that condition on the special use. They may not wanna go forward and therefore the project won't go forward. You know, I don't think we're giving them a permit or anything tonight. We're not giving them a building permit. We can make that contingent upon plating and we can still have these negotiations.
So you're suggesting that we would, if, if we felt it appropriate to approve the special use permit, uh, subject to plating, subject to a developer's agreement? And would that, would that solve your issue if that were the case?
And the infrastructure would address the mayor's concern. He's right, in my opinion, there's not proper infrastructure there and his points, in whichever factor that is that points it out, is correct. And I believe it will if you don't put proper infrastructure in there, have a negative impact on other properties in the area. And I think it's a perfectly valid conclusion to say you need infrastructure for, to address that.
I'm trying to get into a position of a motion without really screwing it up too bad. And you're.
Guidance from the attorney on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, while he's, while he's doing this, so, um, you had mentioned that we've been in a si- similar situation before? Has there been in this exact situation before?
Trying to answer your question. I, I think the planning commission has done their job. They've, they've talked about the land use and they've approved a plat. They, they've done their job on that plat. They've identified the need for Yorktown Street. They've identified the need for Commerce Street. And they forwarded, they're ready to forward it on up to the governing body to accept the dedications. And the dedications are more than the right of ways and the easements. The dedications include the public improvements, those streets, waterline sewer, storm sewer, whatever they may be. We're waiting. Staff is waiting on those petitions, that solution to accommodate those needs for public streets and water and storm sewer.
So we're, we're getting back to, I think, uh, Mr. Mayor's ultimate question. We do all this and we can't agree to the terms. We have, we've created some sins here that I don't know that we can get out of. But I, I still think it's worthy of progressing, but I, I hear what you're about to say.
The ultimate action is the governing body's acceptance of the dedications, which include not only the rights of way and easements, but the public improvements.
So you're saying we wouldn't have to accept any of that if we couldn't have reached an agreement of how the cost basis will be shared?
Correct.
I'd say if we had a motion to that extent, I would. I would start making such a thing.
Mr. Mayor, you have a few more issues though, besides that.
Yes?
Some of those I probably can't cure, but.
You can't.
Such as whether it's the proper place and all that. But at least we can get this part down. We can at least start getting something hammered out. Do you have a proposed motion there? JT, my man?
I do not know exactly what the council wishes are, um, but obviously, um, the, the special use anticipated requires, uh, certain infrastructure which doesn't now exist, is what I'm understanding and what I've heard. Um, I have not been particularly excited, although it's, I believe it accurately reflects the minutes. I've not been particularly excited about condition number two. Uh, it seems to me to be an agreement to agree, and I believe those are unenforceable in the state of Kansas. And so I have been concerned that if you approve this with the second agreement, as prepared by the planning commission, that that might be equal to having no agreement. And, um, I see council member Nelson nodding, so he doesn't think I'm crazy about that. Uh, so I was going to suggest if you're going to, uh, approve a special use tonight and that the real, uh, reason is just simply the infrastructure, although I understand there are different things, uh, that you would override the planning commission's recommendation, if that's what you wanna do, and make your conditions, number one, as specifically listed by them. The subject property, property be satisfactorily platted within one year from the publishing date of this order. And if you want it, that there be a condition number two that doesn't talk about an agreement, but instead says adequate provision be made within one year from the publishing date of this ordinance for the construction and payment of the infrastructure costs necessary to serve anticipated traffic to and the special use needs of the property. I would then ask you if Yorktown and Commerce are specifically important to you, that you would say including improvements to Yorktown and Commerce. If they're not important to you, you can leave that part out. Um, I don't know if that's what the council wants to do and there are other concerns. If you're interested in making that motion, uh, I did write it out and can give it to you.
Why don't I just, okay, what I was gonna say is, I'll make such a motion that you have just stated to get the issue up on the table here.
So as to understand, uh, council member Nelson's motion, what he is proposing is a slight override, not that he would change the factors or conditions, but instead that he would make a motion that, uh, accepting the findings and factors of the planning commission, he overrides their, uh, conditions to, uh, include, one, their condition that the subject property be satisfactorily platted within one year from the publishing date of the ordinance. And a number two, that adequate provision be made within one year from the publishing date of this ordinance for the construction and payment of the infrastructure costs necessary to serve anticipated traffic to and special use needs of the property, including improvements to Yorktown and Commerce.
That is awesome.
Are you saying that's your motion?
That, that is a motion that I have presented here.
Is there a second?
I would second it.
All right, that's a motion by CR and a second by Mike to approve the special use permit for the foregoing reasons you just stated. Further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
I guess something I'd, I'd like to, since the public is here and listening, point out is that, um, our city is growing and businesses are coming. New rooftops are going up and just be aware that as you put an entity that is a non-taxable entity in an industrial park, you are removing taxable entities from moving into that area. So you are absolutely taking money out of the city by authorizing this. Not saying we don't do it, I just wanna make everyone aware that that is a direct result of us approving this type of a, um, variance in, in this park. Um, I do think that the school does tremendous things for the city. Um, I went to Butler Community College and I love them. Um, not that that had any sway on, on what I'm gonna make as my decision tonight. Um, but certainly within the, the city, I moved here because of our school system and Butler being a piece of it. Um, and I think that most of the people here tonight also did the same. But as we come up here and we, we balance how we vote and how the city moves forward, I want you to know that this type of decision makes a direct impact on the, the taxable, um, the amount of tax that we can, we can bring into the city, um, which will directly affect pretty much everything else that we do in the city. I just wanted to point that out for everybody.
Okay, we have a motion by CR and a second by Mike to approve the special use.
I have a question as well.
Further discussion?
Yes, um, I wanted to ask you, Mr. Mayor, what other specific concerns? Cause you hadn't shared all of them and I just wanna know if we're gonna hit the main things you were concerned about with this motion.
Well, a lot of my factors were, um, deemed not applicable by the planning commission. Um, I do believe they apply and I think you'll probably see some of the same issues prevail should you pass this motion. I still think you need to see a plat first. Petitions mainly. Okay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. All right. Let's, uh, let's take a five minute recess. What do you think? Are you okay with that?
I'd make that motion.
Second?
All right, uh, eight oh seven, let's return here at, uh, let's make it eight fifteen. You okay with that?
Yep.
Sure.
Eight fifteen.
So you're going to, to take a break? I don't know. Just say Clark. What's wrong? Come back.
Susan. Wouldn't we have that draft ordinance put together? That they just passed? You can have that one. Okay, let's call the meeting back to order. Yes, so my question still stands on, when that ordinance is going to be available?
We'll have the form of ordinance available tomorrow before five.
Okay. Five AM or five PM? All right. All right, move on to item number ten. You had before you a resolution on the ambulatory surgery center for KMC. I know we've discussed this before. But JT, you want to give a brief report here?
At the risk of belaboring this, at your last meeting, you approved a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for the new ambulatory surgery center adjacent to the hospital. And that did not include the approval of the requested tax abatement for ten years. As that needed to be published in the newspaper, notices need to be sent, and a cost benefit analysis need to be prepared. That's all been done and it's in your packet. So this resolution, if you'd elect to do so, would be the next step in the process to decide whether or not you're going to give the property tax abatement for this project.
Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution approving and add valorem property tax exemption for property owned by the city of Annover, Kansas and leased to ASC Real Estate LLC in connection with purchasing, acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping an opt-patient surgical healthcare facility as presented.
Second.
Who? Who did that?
Mike.
Mike? All right. Motion by Troy, second by Mike to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, we did not adequately handle that. We need to have a public hearing prior to granting the tax abatement.
I, 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 just, it wasn't on the agenda, so I missed it.
It's not.
I would ask if anybody, there was a notice published, if anybody present was just to address this item, that you would allow.
Is there, okay, is this time I am gonna open a public hearing and ask if anybody would like to speak? There being none, I will close the public hearing, and the motion and vote still stands.
Oh, can I read it again? No, I'm kidding.
Want to revote?
No, no.
Can you, can you please have a motion ratifying that decision at the conclusion of the public hearing?
So I do need to make the motion again?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify.
Ratify?
To ratify based on the public hearing, my previous motion.
Right.
Second it.
All right, I have a motion by Troy and a second by Mike to ratify the previous motion based on the opening and closing of the public hearing. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, Endover Road Bicycle Pedestrian Path.
If you'll remember, the Wampo tip allowed us to exchange two bicycle pedestrian projects in order to avoid the school construction. So we're proceeding ahead with the Endover Road project from Central to US 54. What we're looking for tonight is just your agreement to send RFQs out to engineering firms to select a firm to negotiate a contract with in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Carolyn.
I move to authorize the staff to solicit qualifications from consulting and department preliminary engineering for the Endover Road Bicycle Pedestrian Path from Central Avenue to US 54 and begin negotiating a contract for services.
Second.
Motion by Carolyn, second by Brian.
Sorry, my mic was off.
Motion by Carolyn, second by Brian to approve, authorize staff to solicit qualifications as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, IT printer purchase.
Mayor, Council. We've been going through the city infrastructure, upgrading and fixing a lot of things, and we've actually started almost a year ago working on printers. We've consolidated a number of the personal printers into department printers, so that we've got somewhat fewer printers out there. But ultimately, the workhorses of the printing world in the city are the two large-scale printers at the City Hall and Police Department, and then there's a smaller version we've got at the Fire Department. But those are where the bulk of the heavy-duty printing takes place other than the quick printing. What I've got here is a recommendation to replace the two printers at City Hall and Police Department for a total of eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, and then we'll be paying for the service contract at an estimated cost of about three hundred and ninety-five dollars a month from there on out to take care of it. That is similar to what we've been paying on the current contract, and we just keep that going forward. So, um, anyway, I recommend that we upgrade the printers and finish this printer upgrade project. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the replacement of printers with new printers from ImageQuest as recommended.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by CR to approve the IT printer purchase as requested. Further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, AFR Tender Truck Repairs.
Yes, Mayor and Council. I come to you tonight to discuss repairing your two, two thousand and two model tanker truck pumps. So the impeller is the piece that actually needs to be repaired. I apologize, the picture kinda got stretched out. That's supposed to be a circle. But the fins on that piece are what actually spins inside the fire pump, and that's what actually pushes the water. So these two trucks are two thousand and two models, and they see the most heavy, or the most harsh pumping service of all the pumps we have. These are the big tank trucks that we take out into the district and we use for mutual aid to haul water. Part of hauling water is going and getting more and bringing it back to the scene. Sometimes we're able to go to a hydrant, hook up and haul hydrant water. Other times, these trucks are forced to go to a static water source such as a pond, a creek, something like that, and the pump actually sucks the water in from that source into the tank and we haul that water. Doing that is really hard on these pumps. We suck up rocks and an occasional fish that we try really hard not to. We have a screen. Sand is the most harsh, and we have a lot of sand in a lot of our water sources around here. So over the years and all the use these pumps have seen, those fins on that impeller should be straight, and they're not, they're not only notched out like pieces are missing, but they're also bent. And then what you can't see from the picture, the mechanics have told us for the last two years at least, that they've gotten down to a razor edge. They also have visible fractures in them, so we need to replace the impellers. We went out to get quotes. We had four requests sent out. Three of them came back. By far, the smallest quote, or the lowest bid was emergency fire equipment. By chance, these are the folks that actually built these trucks for us back in two thousand and two. Their bid to do both trucks was ten thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. I asked for a ten percent contingency in case we run into any issues. So I'm requesting to spend eleven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents.
Chief, this is what you brought up last time talking to us.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I thought.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the low bid for the Fire Department pump repairs from emergency fire equipment in the amount not to exceed eleven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, sixty cents, and not a penny more.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Greg.
What's that?
Uh, to approve the truck repairs as requested. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I think for item fifteen, I am going to step down due to the,
We've got item fourteen.
Excuse me, fourteen. Oh, yeah, sorry. FEMA grant applications.
You want to stick around for this one, Mr. Mayor? So, every time FEMA opens their assistance of firefighter grant or the AFG grant, we submit applications. Over the last few years, Lieutenant Smith has managed to bring in around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's an approximate number, from the FEMA process to help purchase equipment and even to hire personnel. The three grants that are before you would be our requests for this AFG grant process. None of them include any personnel. It's only equipment. So I'll take them one by one and explain them very briefly. The first grant is actually our first attempt at a regional process. And regional, according to FEMA, is two or more fire departments are involved in the process. So District Eight from Douglas, District Three from Rose Hill, and Endover Fire Rescue want to enter into this agreement to purchase radios and pagers. So we would each be responsible for our own match, so they would have to pay their match, and we would pay ours. The only little bit goofy thing about this is according to the FEMA rules, Endover pays all the match, and then they pay us for their match. However, we can adjust the timing of that. I will be bringing you a memorandum of understanding proposal, and that proposal will say they actually pay us before we submit the order. Each of their fire boards is fully aware of this and fully in support, and they have the funds to be able to make their match. FEMA would not hold Endover responsible for their portion of the match. So now to get more specifically to our portion, we would be requesting about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars worth of radios and pagers, and our match portion would be around twenty-one thousand dollars. Any questions about that one? That's the most complicated one. Okay. Grant number two is a brush truck. We have included in the nineteen budget to purchase two brush trucks. We're asking FEMA to purchase one of them for us. The total price would be one twenty-five. Our match would be in the region of eleven eight. And I do not, a brush truck is not a priority one category for us necessarily. It depends on how they end up scoring it, and like most, that was very, I was going to say like most federal projects, projects is hard to figure out exactly where they're going to go. That wouldn't have been very nice of me, so I'm not going to say that. I'm going to say that I'm unsure exactly how they'll score it, so I can't tell you what our chances are. But if we were to get the grant, we would be responsible for a ten percent match of around eleven eight. And then the last grant is a health and wellness grant. They did, they expanded their micro grants, which they really like funding, from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand this year. And even though they did that, we're only requesting about fifteen thousand dollars on a micro grant application. This would be for health and wellness equipment to support our peer fitness trainers. As you know, we started NFPA fifteen eighty-two physicals, and they're not mandatory this year, but they're voluntary. Next year, they will be mandatory for every person on the Fire Department. In addition to that, we've trained some peer fitness trainers that can basically be coaches and kind of like a personal trainer right there on shift with them. To help those peer fitness trainers, this grant would purchase a stair mill for exercise. It would also purchase some measuring equipment such as body fat analyzer, a hand dimo, I can't say the word, a hand grip analyzer, those types of things. So the total grant would be fifteen thousand dollars, and our match would be, this is a 5% match, so it would be down around 500 bucks. What questions do you have for me?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to allow Andover Fire and Rescue to submit the three grant applications to the 2018 FEMA AFG process as requested.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Mike to allow the Fire Department to submit these grant applications as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto item 15, I will step down.
Item 15, a zoning case Z dash 2015 dash 02. Who wants to be the?
Mr. President, Dent, this is a revisit of the zoning case from three years ago. Just as a very brief reminder, this case was a proposal to amend the Teradyne PUD to allow two additional residences to be built. At the time, after considerable consideration, the City Council was unable to reach a majority vote either way, and so I determined that in the absence of a majority, the zoning was denied. Seacrest LLC, the owner of the Teradyne Country Club, brought suit against the city, and although we prevailed at the District Court, the Court of Appeals for the State of Kansas elected to substitute its judgment for that of the City Council and determined that the failure to act and the resulting denial was so arbitrary that it is unreasonable. They have ordered the District Court's decision to be reversed and have ordered this council to approve Seacrest's requested amendment to the Teradyne PUD, and I believe that ordinance has been included in your packet. It is my position now that in the absence of an appeal, you really have no choice but to approve this ordinance upon taking your oath to uphold the laws of the state of Kansas. I believe this is a binding decision on the city, and so the item on the agenda is for you to approve the resulting ordinance that would allow this two residence addition to the PUD. I'd be delighted to answer any questions or go into more detail if somebody desires.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Did we not talk about this in the last council meeting?
We did.
Last month? Okay?
That's correct.
And we actually made a motion after our talking to council on that?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So why are we doing this again?
Because this officially passes an ordinance finalizing the zoning matter.
Okay.
The other was litigation. This is now the city function of passing an ordinance permitting the two residential lots.
Okay.
With that in mind, I bet you got a motion or something.
Just so that we're all clear, and I don't wish to discuss anything that may have been discussed in executive session, but the clerk has no record of a motion being made after the executive session, and I don't believe any motion or decision was made on this topic in open session.
I think it was.
No, there wasn't.
There was no motion made. There was an opportunity.
We just discussed it.
For an ocean.
We just discussed it.
That's correct.
Yeah, I do not believe this ordinance or this rezoning has been approved. Just to be clear, I would not have brought it up again.
No, it has not been. So we, we need to adopt this if we could have such a motion, maybe.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the findings and factors and recommendation of the Andover Planning Commission to approve zoning case Z dash 2015 dash 02 and adopt an ordinance to amend the Teradyne Preliminary Planning Unit Development Plan as ordered by the Kansas Court of Appeals.
Second.
All right. We got a motion by Greg and a second by Brian to adopt the findings and factors and to adopt the zoning ordinance as presented. Any further questions?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I may make a statement. Not really a question. Not really a fan of, and I understand that this is because we're required to by, when we were elected, to follow all the laws of the state, but I don't really appreciate the state being able to overrule or force us to vote in whatever direction they find fit. And I, I feel like if they're going to do that, it would have been better for me if they would have just said, here's what it is without having us vote again. I voted for it the first time, and I would vote for it again for the same reasons, but I just don't appreciate the state coming in and saying, hey, you can, you're going to vote the way we want you to vote. I'd rather than just say, you don't need to vote. Here is how it is. That's just my opinion.
Your point's very well taken. Do you have, yes, Caroline?
No, I just said, good point.
My off-the-cuff response simply is that at that stage it was a question of law, and they made a ruling of law. That's the difference between the findings of fact that we do, and this is a quasi-judicial matter. It turns into a question of law, and that's why they were able to tell us we were wrong on the law. But your point is very well taken. I concur with your overall analysis on that. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Question there. Since I will not be signing that ordinance, just after two weeks, it's effective anyways. Is that correct?
I'll be happy to sign it if need be.
I don't know that you can. Am I correct?
I hereby move.
If I don't, I'm not signing that ordinance. In two weeks, it just becomes effective without, with or without my signature.
Greg, if you do not execute the ordinance after the commencement of the next city council meeting, it will become law.
All right. I think we're down to member items. Well, it was a short meeting. Brian, you want to start us off?
I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy Halloween tomorrow.
Caroline.
I have no items.
Troy.
Well, I could talk all night about all the stuff that went through today. I would say, first of all, I'm very happy to see such a big crowd that we had, even though it was little contentious issues. It's nice to see that people care and come and want to be a part of this process, because there's a lot of, I guess, pressure put on us to get everything right. We don't always do that. We do most of the time. Okay, fine, we get everything right. No, we don't. Okay. But it's nice to see that, and I'm glad there's some people from my neighborhood that are here that I've talked to over the years, and hopefully you've been enlightened a little bit on how some of this process works anyway. I was serious before when I, when I had mentioned with the community college and what effect that that has on our potential tax base, as well as a potential for businesses to move to Andover. I think we made the right call in doing what we did with the community college, but it's still, it's just one of the many factors that go into how we balance the decisions we make, and so that's always on our mind to make sure that we're doing, being the best stewards we possibly can of the tax dollars in the city, because that's kind of what we were hired to do. Guess that's all I got for tonight.
CR.
I concur with Troy's comments. I also will add that this is city government at work, and I think we did it well. We may be wrong, but we had opposing views that were done civilly, and although this issue may not be finished, I think we went through the issues reasonably calmly, and I thank JT very much for the motion. I know that was a little unreasonable, but you handled that very well, and I, I think the system works, folks, and I'm proud of that part. That's all I have. No items.
Mike.
I would also concur with Troy and Clark as well, and I think that with your comments, Troy, I think that opened the eyes of those parties of what they need to be doing to be able to satisfy their part in these coming weeks or a month of looking at, you know, who is going to take part of what, who's going to pay for what. So I think that was a good point. Also, I want to congratulate Chief Russell on being a movie star, and I can't wait to see those little clips when they get ready to come out.
So make sure you're watching the commercials during Chicago Fire. Don't watch the actual show. I haven't moved up to that yet, but.
Chief, you had something? Staff, have anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, on what Troy was saying, I think the Crescent Lake folks are here primarily on Yorktown, and I just want to, we've talked, we're going to have more meetings, conversations. It'll be, there'll be a topic, it'll be a topic at future council meetings. Might even have another public meeting about it, but this, this issue's going to continue to be talked about, and I want to make sure everybody knows that nothing's finalized on both phases. I think we're pretty much there on the first phase, but the other phase is still going to be discussed. I think I saw Sharon over there, but I know early voting's going on right now. Is that correct? 12 to 7?
I voted.
She's done a wonderful job.
All right.
All day today.
12 to 7, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, then 9 to 4 on Saturday. Is that right? Okay, and then obviously Election Day next Tuesday.
Could you repeat, so starting this week, 12 to 7, Monday, Wednesday?
Or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Tomorrow, Thursday.
So tomorrow, okay, and then on Saturday again. Okay.
9 to 4 on Saturday.
It's all at St. Vincent's, I presume?
Right, that's the early voting site. Correct. And I just wanted to remind everybody, we're trying. I know we have one thing with the wireless that maybe have, have to handle separately, the small cell wireless things, but any other comments, you can get us on the UDM. If you have any left, we would like them as soon as possible. You know, we're wanting to have, I think we're scheduled to have the public hearing and.
Scheduled for public hearing on November 20th.
At the planning commission level. The other thing is we are going to need some planning commission appointments. I've, we're probably going to need two people from outside the city possibly. I need to look at those things, but if you have anybody, one person inside the city, I think, is going to be needed, but we may need two. So if you can think of anybody outside of the city but in our planning area, that, that's, that's a tough criteria, by the way. That's.
In Butler County.
Right, right. Yeah, can't be in, right, you can't be in Sedgwick County. That's correct.
Mark, I have a question for you. How do you feel that the community meeting went at the high school?
I think the council can comment on it. We had a lot of issues raised, a lot of questions, and that's another thing, particularly on the annexation, I'll say, is we're going to have probably a total of six more meetings on that issue because we got a two-phase annexation going, you know, three for the first phase obviously, and three for the second. So there were some questions, and we have some more work to do as staff to get to that, but I'd let you guys talk about the rest of it.
Mike, I would say that several people in Crescent Lakes that had spoke were worried about the road that would go through the park. I don't think they were informed enough to, to really make some of the, I guess, in their own mind decisions or ideas of what they thought it would happen within the park, which is fine. We wanted to start the conversation, and that was started. So while some of that was contentious and even mean and directed at us, I would say unjustly, I guess I get it because there's fear there when you're in the unknown. It's our job to make sure that they know. We don't have all the answers. We haven't, you know, done any of the, the work really on what that might look like within the parks, so that's fine, and we have a lot of time, as Mark had said, to follow up. We're talking about conceptual drawings of different options that might be what the park would look like, which would make it as easy for us as it would to show to the public, and I think that will be a tremendous help as we discuss it. So I'm just talking just about that one piece, the park piece. I feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of contention there because of unknown and fear. Also, there was a group that were there, I'm not sure if they spoke, that really just didn't want to see any of the growth, even with the schools and with the city, because they feel like it's becoming less of an urban area and more, or less of a rural area and more urban, and so I feel like they were maybe venting some of that. At least they, they sure have on our Crescent Lakes Facebook page that I've been trying to work with everybody with. So that's some of the things I noticed.
Yeah. So hopefully we'll take into consideration what all these people are saying in multiple meetings that we're going to keep having of what we actually decide or decide not to do.
Can I make an additional comment about that, too? Because I think that was just mentioned. On the annexation issue, that, that is different from the road. So in that neighborhood, they still have that option of if the 51% 51% either way swings it, if there are 51% of the people that want, I mean, I guess it's a negative thing. If somebody's going to object to it, they need 51% to.
Well, I think annexation is made just by the council. You have to.
Oh, wait a minute. That's true, because this is.
Those are just for improvement.
But the water improvement, you're correct. If, and that, and you know, that's one of the big, that's probably the big issue out there, you know, on top of whether or not we bring them into the city is water service.
That's right, because they are enclosed, so they're really not one of those county annexations any longer.
They're eligible for unilateral annexation. Further comments?
Mr. Mayor, real quick. Andover Chamber, safe Halloween tomorrow, 4 to 6 p.m., St. Vincent de Paul, and then your firefighters will be out in the communities, in the neighborhoods, handing out glow necklaces. So make sure we keep our little ones safe and watch for traffic, please.
Nice. Anything else? Let's get out of here.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Troy. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.